Who can join primarily because we had questions about folks who were business owners but not residents who wanted to join the committee. It was not defined previously and we thought it would be very helpful to have it defined. So what we've changed the language to say is of the nine members four to seven members of the community appointed by the select board with no more than two of those being non-resident community members who own a business in Topsfield. So we want to be very specific. And then the end of that sentence, non-resident members are not eligible for chair or secretary positions. We do value the opinions and input from business owners. As part of what we do for ECDC has to do with the obviously economic and community development. And then the second bullet will be one member from select board or previously it said two members. And then the last bullet remains the same which is one town administrator because we only have one.
Cool.
So those are the changes, they're pretty minor.
So it says four to seven appointed by the select board.
Yes.
So there's there's um one that's automatic, the town administrator. So if there's only four appointed and there's a town administrator, that's five. Does that contemplate that there's just five members of the committee at that point in time?
We have four to seven members in the first bullet. Then you have one member on the select board, so that's at the currently it's me. And then one town administrator.
It doesn't have to be Kevin.
The town administrator?
It's just one like it could be the Denver's town administrator.
Could be any town, technically it could be the guy from Boxford.
It could be him.
I don't want him.
So Kevin, you're on notice.
Kevin's are working now.
That's good.
He can be replaced.
Kevin. Does that answer your question?
So seven in the first bullet plus one plus two adds up to nine. In theory, you could, in theory, I'm guessing his question and it makes sense is you could have
Thank you for the question and the question.
a a group as few as five people.
Six.
Six. Six.
Four plus six.
Yes.
Right.
I'm not good to.
What did Matt so thank you Bob.
I see six.
Good teamwork.
I don't see the room.
So you could have an ECD C ECD C of six members.
It's six to nine.
Yeah.
Yes, six to nine.
Okay, there you go.
We have we have plenty.
That maths well.
Yes.
Do you have a waiting list?
We have we yeah, we have a waiting list still.
Wow, so continuing my unknowledgeable questions, trying to bring myself up to moderate level of knowledge. We talk about um by supporting planning, implementation and communication efforts. Can you give me some examples of the of planning, implementation or communication efforts that are ongoing?
That are ongoing right now.
Or have or have happened recently?
So for planning, um I would say couple of items. We've talked about the um the mural downtown. We've talked about the use of the pocket park downtown. Um we've talked about um trying to think of other things really. Or even Kevin because he brings them too. Um we've talked about well, we've had our two business socials which kind of brings together all of the businesses on in town.
Communication.
Yeah, that's communication and um planning. Signage. Signage, yep, we're talking about signage. We've done a lot of things, what else?
What's the third one?
Uh planning, implementation and communication.
Implementation, yeah, so kind of in some sense go hand in hand.
Yeah.
And so I there's been some really great, we talk a lot about the SAC, the State Building Advisor Committee. I will just say though that the ECDC Economic Community Development Committee has done an amazing job as well. It is a very good group of people who are passionate about the revitalization that's underway here in Topsfield. We're able to discuss current events, we're able to discuss future planning. One of the goals that we talked about when um vice chair became the appointed member of the ECDC that took over the chairpersonship was really focusing on the networking component of what this group can do. We aren't represented in a chamber, a lot of what chambers do is networking. And so short of that, this has been a phenomenal opportunity with this group of people. They're very passionate about this community and passionate about our business community to try to coordinate those efforts. We don't have a plan or we don't have some of those resources. So being able to rely on the people within the community to help organize that has been really important. And they've been huge success, huge huge successes on those socials. First one being at our friend Zili's Zumies, um which we had twenty five fish representatives in the business community. It was the first time we'd done something like that. It was outstanding the amount of participation we had. And it was really um heartwarming to see how much uh belief that the business community, faith the business community, support the business community has for the efforts that leadership has been implementing. And it's a partnership with that that group, the broader community and the leadership that's allowing a lot of the good things to happen. Then we had the great event at Meredith Farm as well.
Yes, yes, that was that was about fifty.
So in concert with the, one sec, wait.
No, I was gonna say that was about fifty people. To give you a couple other examples, last year in anticipation of uh Small Business Saturday, we talked about ways to get the businesses to kind of come together and have one sort of united effort. So we had a flyer that went out for Small Business Saturday. And then we also talk about how to attract customers to the businesses, so different ways to do that.
So in concert with the goals, are we shifting some of the focus to Route One?
With the ECDC?
Yeah.
We haven't necessarily shifted focus, they're just included in our whole discussion.
Yeah.
We've had a lot of conversations about how do we attract people from Route One into the downtown, but also supporting our Route One businesses as well. Uh we talked about signage like a year ago and we started working on a subcommittee around that. Um and we've talked about some of the vacant spaces, Petco formerly known as the Petco Building. You know, we have built relationship with the owner Joe and working with some people potentially to go into that space. Making sure that the business community and the members of that committee are aware of those conversations because there's always possible for synergy uh with what goes in there and what happens in other places on Route One and in the downtown. But I think there isn't explicitly a downtown focus as much as there is just a broader let's let's do right by Topsfield. We talked about Alpha Alpha Farm um in those meetings, talked about Tenspool Lab downtown, outside the downtown. So there's a lot, over a lot.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Move to approve.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was making the motion, so if you have something to say before I make the motion, please.
I I had just always felt that ECDC is focused on downtown. And I think that's the way it should be. I think it I think it trying to develop, I think for that group to try to develop something on Route One is it is really tough. And I'm not sure that that's I'm not sure that that thing can be attained by them. But I like the ECDC being involved in trying to do something with downtown and the shopping center and whatever else we can do.
Yeah, Route the Route One vacancies or empty lots are a bigger challenge, that's for sure, but there's also a bigger payback.
Well, I understand, but I'm not sure that's yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Move to approve the updated charter for the Topsfield Economic Community Development Committee as presented.
Second.
Me too.
Got a third.
Any other discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Surplus, anything good?
Thank you.
I didn't see any listing of items.
You could use a lawnmower.
Those in Excel spreadsheet. All right, next up, surplus.
There is the list, we have it.
Just on time.
Hey! Anything good?
It depends on your definition of good.
Exactly.
Some big ones.
Is there any alamite greaser?
No, well, well, I don't know, I don't know what that is. There is a grease thing now.
Wait, it falls under fire.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
I'm getting way ahead of the chair.
Give give him a lawnmower.
No, oh no, I don't want anything.
No, no, this is all for sale.
You're not gonna have to buy that lawnmower.
All right, so we are for everyone, we are on to declaring surplus approval of equipment.
An ambulance, oh God, I'd love to have one of those.
Awesome driving that around, wouldn't I?
Yeah, yeah.
An ambulance?
I would make the point out Chief here, Chief's done a great job
I don't know.
working with the departments to identify the surplus item.
It's kind of scary.
We do have two larger ones this time, and that is the COA bus, the former COA bus, as well as the ambulance. And with the ambulance, I'll also note there were some conversations with the new ambulance coming on, which pardon my TA updates. What we do with the third, this is the disposition of that third ambulance.
And if the um council and aging bus um is sold for more than five thousand dollars, we um would put the five thousand dollars in the general fund and the rest of it has to go back to the state as part of the contract with the state for that.
Oh yeah.
So other than that, everything else goes to the general fund, so.
What do we think the ambulance is worth?
It depends, um it depends, it's 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 um it depends. It depends if you use it as an ambulance or if you use it as like electrician's.
Okay.
If anyone's watching, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
I'm just curious if it's ten dollars or what?
No, it's a he he the man indicated, um to be honest with you, the man indicated this council aging bus is in very good shape, so um.
Yep.
You must be cool.
He was excited for that.
You're definitely gonna get more than five thousand for that.
I would think so, yeah, yeah, that's uh nice, so.
So if somebody happened to have moved and downsized, for example, and had some light yard equipment or something, donate to the town to put into this process, is that possible?
I don't I don't think so, but I'll give you the name of the man and see if if you could um like if he does personal stuff, I don't know, but um no, thank you, we have enough.
Member member Metz, if you were able to sell out those goods and then want to make a donation to the town, this select board could accept that donation.
That's very big of you, the select board, thank you.
Well, you're very welcome.
Uh Jen, do you have anybody that's really interested in any of this big stuff?
I don't know anything about anything yet, we just um there's a link that I'll give, I'll send to Stephanie Bellotti and she'll post and you uh you um vote on it, you know, you go and bid on it and um um there are people that this is all they do, so when they come pick up stuff, their whole truck is full of stuff they picked up from everywhere, so um.
Yeah, okay. Uh number eight, what is lot of IT?
Um in the basement here, which we can talk about the condition of the basement here, but we will. Um there is a um large corner down by the pub um inspectional services that was the um seems like a cemetery for um printers and screens and alike.
Oh, really?
And so um Debbie had uh Mike from New Era, um the IT person come in and just advise and um till you know whatever was like valuable to us to move it and then so it's literally a pile down by the stairs in the back.
Is that a sale opportunity or disposal?
Oh, computer knows it. They they cleaned them off, so there's no um information that can be recovered, that's privileged. So if somebody wants an old can older computer, they they're welcome to it.
I think they separate the metals in them, I think that's what they same as the water meters. They want the the waters meters will actually probably go for a lot of money um because of the metals that are in them, that's what happened last time. My experience.
So it's not to use as a as the original intent.
It could.
Maybe, yeah, maybe.
They could.
It's metal.
They could either.
It's metal content.
Depends on the person.
Yeah.
I I just like to say too, this is obviously Chief Collins Brown, this is not part of her job description, is helping us with the surplus. She does come from time to time with a great list of items, but she does run point in coordinating with the departments um seeing the value of doing it, so just a thank you to Chief for going above and beyond and helping us with the disposition of these products.
That was my question, how in the world did you get involved?
Oh, I'm telling you how I did mostly.
You don't you don't have any else to do, so this is a wonderful.
No, truthfully, it was to try to empty out the the uh fire station, the highway garage because previous um chiefs have kept stuff.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't have any place to put the stuff, so and we don't need it, so that was what it really started, but it when you start talking to, you know, if you have some mowers or something or you have those water meters rather than sitting in a bucket up there, you could they're gonna go back in the general fund, so.
And if you're picking bittersweet or you're dispositioning old product, it can be therapeutic.
Or money getting some poison ivy, that's all.
I'm gonna move to declare the items presented as surplus.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Quick questions, so remind me, what happens if they don't sell?
I would just just put them in the metal dumpster or whatever, um yeah.
And and let's just say someone wanted to look at maybe the mowers, can you look at them before you put a bid?
Of course, yeah, there's a way to contact us, yeah, it's all on the website, yeah. Like I said, I'll give that to Stephanie and she can post it and send it along.
Doug's wondering what that question was like.
Why, Doug, no, poor Doug. I thought we were pulling out.
And then cut some more grass.
Okay, any other discussion?
Thank you, Jen.
All those in.
Yeah, you're welcome, yeah.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'd be very curious and grateful to hear what what comes out of this.
I can't wait to check out the ambulance.
We see it, we see it every year.
Well, I know. We're starting a new thing where we have a third round of discussion after the.
Alright.
One of the best things we do is sell this and bring it to the board, it feels like every time we're doing this, the board might buy something.
All right, next up, sticking with fire, assistance to firefighter grant acceptance.
So we have two, uh we were super lucky, um it's been really um an unsure uncertain time in the fire service for federal grants. We're never sure what's gonna happen and we knew this particular grant, um September thirtieth, it had to be done. It had to be awarded or not. Um and it's one of the things the president had taken away and then um brought back. But um the first one is um it's a thirty it's oh it's thirty thousand eight hundred and fifty two to fifty seven dollars, sorry. And um it's to upgrade our um exhaust recovery system. So the yellow tubes that attach to the trucks as they back into the station to take the uh exhaust and carcinogens out of the building. Um they're they're triggered by air, uh they break all the time. And then newer technology, first of all, is a magnet, so it's easier to attach. And then also the motor up top, and I'm sure all the neighbors hear it when it goes off. So um it is a to upgrade that. So um the contribution for that, our contribution for that would be fifteen hundred and forty two dollars. So for fifteen hundred and forty two dollars, we'll get thirty two thousand four hundred dollars worth of of product. So uh that um that grant, we're really fortunate to get and um that fifteen hundred forty two dollars and eighty six cents would come out of my budget from um building maintenance, so.
Any motions?
I'll make a motion to vote to accept the Department of Homeland Security's assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of thirty thousand eight hundred and fifty seven dollars and fourteen cents to be used to replace the old exhaust capture system in order to meet current vehicle emissions and safety standards.
Second.
Additional discussion?
And this is something that otherwise would have been budgeted?
Download, yeah, yep, download, yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
We always talk about and commend you on your efforts to create grant money. And you've done a great job with that and you continue to do a great job with that.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
All those in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and now I see more money.
Yeah, the next one is um uh we were it's it's a strategy that we use to um go in as a regional grant. So I talked to a number of chiefs about who might be interested, who needed to replace their air packs and um who might be interested in going into that together. Uh one of the things with is you have we would have to agree to all use the same uh product. So um I was able to connect with the um city of Newburyport and the town of North Reading. And um so together we applied for a grant to replace our um air tanks, bottles and packs. Um so the grant, um the total amount is eight hundred thousand, eight hundred sixty thousand dollars. So that's split between um North End over Newburyport and us. So the Topsfield component of is about seventy thousand. Um so we haven't um this has not yet been accepted by the Newburyport City Council, it's on their agenda for tomorrow night, so they'll accept it. And then we'll meet and um it's about fifty thousand dollars less than we had applied for. So we know that we have to cut, the rules say that you have to buy what you said you're gonna buy, but we can't because they haven't given us enough money, so we'll have to file an amendment. But so we we'll get probably get less than that um sixty eight thousand, but um that's that's um incredibly fortunate that we're able to get this grant. This is an item on our capital plan for fiscal year twenty eight, so um.
So you said it was to buy it was to buy new tanks, is this this is not related to the scoopers and fittings that were on the surplus list though, right?
Well, some of those uh those tanks that are on there are, but there's a certain they have an expiration date, so there's only a certain number of times they can be hydrostaticly hydrostatically tested and rebuilt. So the ones that are on the surplus are super old, I just found a way to do something. But these are because um we're cycling through, it's the time, twenty eight is the time that we're supposed to replace them, so.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions?
Wonderful stuff, all right.
Yeah, this is a this is a great, you know, great partnership.
I'll make a motion to vote to accept the Department of Homeland Security's assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of sixty eight thousand three hundred and ninety eight dollars to be used to purchase equipment.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Always good, Jen, thank you, very much.
Yep.
Happy to do it.
And we are done with the new business.
Stormwater.
Not many.
If that's coming off, that's gonna be on the twentieth.
Stormwater. Yeah, you said we would.
Oh, you're gonna relay that?
Table that. All right, yeah, there there is the stormwater review which is being tabled.
Mm-hmm.
Not to do this, well, not for review tonight.
Mm-hmm.
And the last item we have already covered, that was Alpha Farm. So with that, we move into the select board updates. Uh let's see, let's shake things up.
I'll don't start here.
Mr. Metz.
So I was uh on one of these nice days, I was uh decided to go buy a live patient at Zili's Zumies and sorry, and uh sit in the pocket park and there was nobody there at the time and I got kind of bored.
Zumies.
So I noticed that two of the umbrellas were up and they were in the shade. So in thinking about our conversations about the umbrella damage, I put them down and tied them down. Um and then I started picking up litter and I did find litter there. So I picked up a number of pieces, but it's brought to my mind the thought, when are we scheduled? When do we schedule ourselves to put those umbrellas away from the winter?
Usually when the weather turns, so um people, we've observed last year, people enjoyed them pretty late into the season uh through October. Think we left them up last year, close to Thanksgiving actually. But what we do is we're planning on, because like you mentioned, a couple of them uh suffered some damage this year. Um replacing next year anyway, so we'll we'll give these the longest life they can, as long as people are enjoying them.
Get them ready.
But before the snow flies.
Okay, and um in concert with the sustainability initiatives and energy conservation and use and so forth, I recently uh compared the kilowatt hours use at the new place I have compared to the old place at a time when I was occupying the old place, which is bigger. And the kilowatt hour usage was double at the new place that was unoccupied and smaller. And do we have anything like energy audits or anything that we can point people?
MassSave, so MassSave offers at no cost um through third party vendors, opportunities for them to do an energy assessment of your primary residence. Might even be for secondary homes too, I'm not a hundred percent certain, but um MassSave is a is a great resource and they'll I I've used them personally, um there's incentives they'll let you know about, they'll give you some best practices, they'll let you know where some of your best opportunities for efficiency might be.
And that's free because we're customers of National Grid.
Okay, so I because I've heard other comments from people that um that they they're surprised sometimes by the usage in our neighborhood, so maybe you're right about them too.
Okay, Mr. Jackson.
Uh no comment except for the fact that here we are in the fair season. We went through all that business on Friday and um it's typical and we had a report from the police chief tonight about the fact that thing has been it's been very stable, quiet. No issues, no significant issues other than the usual people falling and having difficult time getting around and whatnot. But um uh here we are at that time of year again.
Ms. Mashirly?
Well, mine was gonna be the same thing with the fair opening, this is the week of the fair, so that's pretty much uh what we all talk about for the next six days remaining, so. It was a good opening ceremony, we had great great weather. Um and the attendance, I think for Friday was a good crowd, so we'll just have a little bit of rain on Wednesday and the rest of the week should be should be good, that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Hook?
I'm all set.
All right, well, I was gonna bring out the fair too. But um I guess the other thing is, where are we with the listening sessions? Who's up next, do we know, I'm trying to open up.
I think, I don't I don't know, I don't have that link, I can't find that link.
Shell, no. Bob.
I think I'm October fifteenth, maybe?
I've got them.
Huh?
Twenty second, what's the last one?
I'm gonna list here, it's gonna take me a second to open it up.
October eighteenth, I just have Bob.
Oh. Excellent.
All right, but while while he's looking up his list, can we make sure Stephanie um advertises that?
It's on the eighteenth, is that recent?
Yeah, well, I should have Bob verify that, he set that up, but.
That'd be a tough day, sorry, I'm not part of your evening, that's right.
When do you have me down?
It's the three seventy five.
I finished, so I.
But the three seventy five starts at three P M.
Great segue.
You and I.
Great segue, so come downtown.
We're done by eleven.
I'll pull in.
I can't do it.
Do you have to run?
October fifteenth, eighteen, Saturday.
So you run straight to the listening session.
Oh, the run's on Sunday. Oh, it's twenty four.
That's wait, that's a week, that's a week from Saturday.
I don't know what's going on over there.
He's verifying, it's the eighteenth, who else is helping?
Next listening session is the eighteenth.
Correct.
And it's uh scheduled for Boyd and I, and Boyd has.
And I can't do it because I'm working on that day, so somebody can take my place maybe.
I'm happy to do it. There you go, thank you, Marshall.
You said what?
I'm happy to do it.
You do it.
So in addition to be able to speak to the select board at our meetings, you also have the monthly listening sessions. Come on down, that's all I have.
Can you see me there?
So with that, I will turn it over to the town administrator for the TA report.
Vice Chair.
Well, I need to take myself off the schedule, but I had you tendedly for, oh, sorry.
Um thank you, um so we have a new ambulance which is in service, uh we talked about the disposition of the old ambulance, that's because the new one uh arrived, um it was fitted up in North Attleboro, um there's some small tweaks they're making from time to time on it, but it's up and running, you'll see it around town. Um it's exciting, it's uh it's investing in our people, investing in our community and we're excited uh for that. The LED streetlight retrofit project commenced today. And they gave us a list of way more, many more streets than actual streets that I think they were able to tackle in one day. But um they are working this week, they are on that list of working on streets um away from the fairgrounds. So if anyone was curious about those activities taking place, um they they are being coordinated to not interfere with Chief Hubby and Chief Collins Brown's public safety activities. Someone or someone may not have, but just so everyone's aware, the flag on the common, um sort of staple of our common uh broke last week. And so we are meeting with the vendor first thing tomorrow morning at nine A M. To this, he's bringing a uh crane to take a look and see what we can do to fix that. Uh hoping to have that fixed prior to the eighteenth, which is a very popular day for different activities because that's our three seventy five and the flag raising will take place on the common. Uh the flag will raise on the common, the event will be in and around Town Hall. The shopping center sign, um long time coming, we got a very aggressive price and I think partly because of the um the savings the town received by uh getting a very aggressive quote. Uh we haven't been able to get that up as quickly as we would have liked, but due to persistence from our procurement and special project coordinator, Demaron, um we got received confirmation today that this will be installed by the end of the month.
Great.
We aren't here by October thirtieth, I'm going there on Halloween and telling them they have to come.
Well, then come by Parsonage afterwards for some candy.
I like it, um new website, so we've talked about the new website. Um on the front end, there'll be some very minor uh changes, but on the back end, there's there's a migration that's gonna be kicking off very shortly. Uh we'll be train training up our users at the department levels on the new um website platform. It's the same provider, Civic Plus, it's just an upgrade in their systems. Also has a number of modules that allow us to do things such as recreation software and data um bankings like laser fiche which we've had, which will save money on third party vendors and other places, we believe. Um but that work is underway, it'll be a number of weeks and potentially months before that um is concluded. But that's uh important element to what we we do, um and making sure our website's up to date and we're using the latest technology to get deliver services through it. New server, um if anyone's called Town Hall, you might have heard a message that is not completely correct saying that we are in summer hours. Um we've attempted to change that, unfortunately, the server that's core that um associated with the phone system had a malfunction and it's actually not allowing us to make the changes, we had to order a new server. And so that server's in transit, soon it's here, that'll be. And so that server's in transit, soon as it's here, that'll be replaced, and once it's replaced and troubleshoot, uh, or up, I should say hooked up. Um, and confirmed to be working, we'll then be updating our voice message on the answering service, so we got a couple people who've identified.
I know I've been the one who's nagging about that, but, um.
And one other person mentioned it too, so you're not alone.
So I'm hoping we didn't buy a whole server just to make that message change.
We needed it for the phones because the, it's not, the server was malfunction, it's beyond just that, we couldn't do any changes on it, so we're static with it. So we had to make the upgrade on it, um, and I think there was allocated funds, I think. About year four or five, and we anticipated around that time, we might need to be upgrading the system anyway. And, uh, fortunately, we've saved the money, cause it's housed in the police department, one of our reserve officers is our I T person at the police department as well. Was able to troubleshoot it, identify the issue, and then we had to call in to have the service, and then they said we need a new server, so. We talked about water regionalization a couple of weeks ago, we mentioned it tonight, um, by way of just update, um. We have authorized a report to be, uh, reviewed through the water department, uh, looking at different options, both. Investing locally, deal with the P F A S issue, but also looking at the two regional options, one would be Salem Beverly Water Board, or the other would be M W R A. One requires one of them coming on board and the provider, which is Salem Beverly, the other one requires Danvers. And M W R to come on board, and we've been having conversation, I've been having conversations with my counterparts and with those entities. To, and as well with the regional group led by Bruce, Senator Bruce Tar, um, to try to expedite. Decision-making and more recently, the senator is committed to instead of doing it holistically with all of the thirty-plus entities and communities involved. And doing it sort of a tiered approach or a step-by-step approach where Top Seal, because of our time constraints relative to the P F A S. Um, could be in the first, first stage of looking to partners, one or two other communities to start the regional effort. But our time is short, we have to make some decisions quickly. Um, it is a moving target like we talked about a couple of weeks ago with the P F A S regulations and what those are gonna look like, but we're paying close attention and we are. Taking the other steps we need to be best prepared for when the time comes, if and when we have to make any type of financial commitments. More to come on that, um. Three seventy five, we just mentioned earlier, I'll just reiterate, um, we're final stages of finalizing the last elements of the event. It's gonna be really exciting, we have games, food trucks, multiple food trucks, um, we'll have a dessert truck, the Whoopie Wagon at Top Sealed. Also have, um, um, it'll be festive, it'll, we're hoping to have a band, we're still trying to confirm that, uh, but there'll be music. Um, and we're, it'll be family-friendly, sponsored by Tesco, and we talked about earlier at the next meeting, we hope to prove the liquor license the one day. So that we can have, uh, wine at the event as well, um, and most importantly, there'll be community, there'll be a place and opportunity to gather. And if the tap is successful, as the block parties we did at the Hollywood Highway Garage, it'll be a huge success, uh, at the three seventy five as well.
Yeah, this, this history discussion could be really interesting and a nice anchor to the, the actual content of the celebration.
Yeah, it's, it's, it'll flow upstairs at three P M with John Kinnon in that, that historical presentation that he's put together. We'll be recording, preemptive recording of that in this room on this T V, uh, so that we can have that, uh, as a separate video to show. Um, now and in the future, but we encourage people to come to the live version, obviously, ask questions and participate, and then we'll be out in the front of the building. Um, where we'll have, um, proclamations read, of the flag raising. And then we'll invite everybody over to the C O A patio for that event, that, uh, will be our block party, ten to night, be a lot of fun, hope everyone can come. Is it the eighteenth? There's, uh, Oc- October eighteenth, three o'clock up top, four o'clock on the steps, and then four thirty, the block party kicks off for a few hours till seven thirty-eight. Depending on when people want to wrap.
Could we, uh, anticipate the disstaff side of the Hartounian plan? Perhaps at ten?
Yes, I do, if we get a bouncy house, they'll, they'll have to be there. Insurance isn't a fan of the bouncy house at the moment, we're working on that.
They were all at the fair, you saw them at the fair.
I didn't, actually.
Um, budget kickoff, so, uh, you've, you've all seen the budget schedule, so you know we're in the midst of starting that process. Had a really, uh, very good conversation with the departments today. Setting expectations, talking about the milestones that we're gonna work through, um, on that. Uh, capex, capital, five-year capital plan will be due back to myself on the twenty-second, and then I'll be prepared for the. Select board to see the first version of that formally, um. By the end of the month, and then, um, we're also by the end of this month, expecting to have the finance committees, uh, guidelines for this coming year as well. We're also working, Sam's working on putting together a number of meetings as well with, uh, the chairs of different boards, finance committees, select boards. Um, school committees, um, my, our town administrators with our regional partners, both the elementary and at, uh, Masco. Uh, early in the process, um, and then as we map out our process, I'm sure there'll be a number of opportunities to touch base with our, our, our partners in the schools. Um, partners on the finance committee, uh, et cetera, so. Um, a lot more to come on that, but I'll, every, every update, every two weeks, I'll be giving an update of my E T A updates on how the budget process is going. And then last but not least, I think it was touched on a couple of times, and I'm gonna mention it as well, there was a Top Seal Fair opening ceremony on Friday. And a weekend full of fun and activities at the fair, um, the weather seems to be cooperating with us thus far. I know Wednesday, there's some forecasted rain, some sprinkles, um, and then again, hopefully some good weather the rest, um. Fair's very much relying on good weather, and so fingers crossed that they have a huge successful year, um, as Mister Jackson said, um. My family was there on Friday, they came and joined after the opening ceremonies, um, it was, it was a great time, Ferris wheel. Hot dogs, strawberry milk, they're great.
Two thousand five hundred and seven pound pumpkin.
Yes, and a very large pumpkin.
Record, a record.
We claimed the record for New England, do we beat the, uh, the Big E in West Springfield?
I think.
I'm not sure of that.
The paper said it was a record, the largest pumpkin ever weighed. At the fair, well, I think it might have been New England.
So, so the big thing I learned, having now been the town administrator for coming up to my sixth year. Is that the giant pumpkins, the seeds are incredibly valuable. And they're resold as genetics apparently matter pumpkins.
Well, they're very tiny too.
Right, if you wanna grow a big pumpkin, there's a place to get pumpkin seeds that are very specific to that, so.
A guy asked me the other day, what do they do with that pumpkin? And I said, I don't know, but he said, I'd love to have some of those seeds.
I will say, um, outside of, you know, the fun and everything else, just by way of update from public safety, no rust this weekend. Um, there was, uh, no traffic reported issues, I know the police were very diligent trying to move traffic, our residents and visitors alike. And we had seven transports on the ambulance, uh, which is very typical, and they were, as I think Mister Jackson, you mentioned earlier. Um, there was a couple falls, um, some elderly people, some people were sick who came to the fair and needed to be transported, not. Sick in the sense of like a COVID sick, but just, uh, not well, and so they, um, they transported, but. Um, all in all, a very successful first weekend, and again, teams working very hard to ensure that success through this weekend and the next weekend as well. Thank you, those include my updates.
Yeah, the, um, the, I made my first foray into the beer, uh, tent. Which is no longer a tent, it's now a structure. And, uh, the, uh, one of the fair managers was talking to me about it, says they have these screens on the outside walls. And heaters they can put down in case the weather is cold or windy, and they said they, they basically built these pieces. In Pennsylvania, and then brought it up here and assembled it in Pennsylvania by the Amish, and they brought it up here and assembled it. Big, you know, six inch by six inch beams, it's, it's beautiful structure, and they're doing a lot of beer business.
Oh, if I could, one other, one other thank you, it doesn't just start in with our public safety team, there's a number of other people, partners. Who participate in helping ensure that the fair goes off successfully and safely, and that's our board of health. Um, that's our building department, and in years past, and this year again, uh, John Coolan, our former health director. Um, has helped in us in those efforts, and with John Guley, our new health director, going for a septic certification, it's even more important to have some. Um, reliable resources to help us get that off and running, so thank you.
Do we, uh, are we responsible for regulating the sort of cleanliness, health conditions of each and every food vendor?
Yes.
That's a lot of work.
Hundred and, during my thirteen-year tenure here, we averaged one hundred twenty-five food vendors per fair.
That's a lot of work.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
You wanna, you wanna transition to me now? Cause I got a whole presentation here, well. Yeah, you're looking at the clock, I know. Wanna invite every member, board of selectmen, to, to shadow me on my rounds, my daily rounds. I'm there at, on the fairgrounds every day. Uh, I do one or two sets of rounds every day where I walk the perimeter. I'm looking for black water, gray water, potable water, uh, standing water, the, the, the food vendors, uh, uh. Specifically shore, but we're also looking at the temporary housing, we're looking at the incursion of trash into the wetlands. I found a couple of empty, uh, beer cans next to the, uh, Ipswich Riverbank earlier today. So I went to the appropriate person to go out there and, and, and dispose of them properly. Um, you, 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 you talked about how well the fair appears to be running, uh, right now. I can say that twenty years ago, I went into, uh, 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 appropriate personnel offices. To get things, uh, accomplished, corrected, uh, et cetera, pages and pages of notes that I had taken during my rounds. Now it's two or three things that I can talk about off the top of my head, once I get to them. So that's a huge improvement, that, uh, if I kept all of the stats, that would be a big metric. Uh, that, uh, upon which to, to judge how, how well it's going. We, uh, while you were having apparently a wonderful time on Friday, uh, John Bole, myself and two other inspectors. Were continuing to do our, our work with the food vendors, we were, uh, busy with that until sometime between five and six P M Friday night. It's, it's always that way, uh, where, where you have a, a, a certain, a number of people that you have to regulate. And you get down to a very small minority taking up a majority of your time and energy, uh, in the crunch time. Um, most of the vendors there, uh, uh, have, have been doing it a long time, they're committed to doing it right. We have a, a great rapport, and, uh, they're interested in, in doing it, uh, not only, uh, in, in a compliant manner. But in a collegial manner for, uh, between themselves with, with each other, they help each other out. I also hold two, uh, orientation sessions, the two nights prior to the start of the fair, Wednesday and Thursday nights, six to seven P M. And, uh, the, the fiesta shows and the fairgrounds makes it mandatory for them to attend, and we pack the clubhouse. And, uh, we have a good time, we have, have some laughs, and we, we re- review what the code requires and what the inspectors are going to be, uh, looking for. So I invite the selectmen to join me if you wish, uh, while I'm doing my rounds, shadow me, uh, during the fair. And, uh, uh, and you'll, you'll be seeing what I just described, uh, that we're looking at, looking for, uh, talking to people about. But I also, uh, 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 request that next time you're on the fairgrounds and you go into the flower building. That you look at, uh, display number thirteen, and that's the Rest Stop Ranch display, it's our third year in the Flower Building. And we, uh, win awards, uh, each, that, each year that, that we are there, that we're very proud of. And, uh, your, your last assignment, uh, while you're in the Flower Building is to go to one of the voting tables. And check off, uh, number thirteen.
Number thirteen.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, and the last, uh, invitation, uh, that I'm, I'm making is, uh, to invite you. To come to Rest Stop Ranch to tour this, uh, this four-and-a-half acre private property that is a nonprofit. We are, we are approaching, uh, qualifying as a level one arboretum, which we're very proud of. We have a, a partnership with Endicott College, we, we have interns, uh, uh, that we work with, uh, each year. As well as, uh, students from Masconahma, we're always looking to, to widen our, our outreach. Uh, but we need for, uh, town officials to be aware firsthand of what it is we do. I could tell you ten years ago, we had a tenth of a mile that was considered navigable by people with ambulatory issues. Now it's a half mile, tenth of a mile to a half mile, and I credit, uh, Carl, uh, Carl Ackerman. Who, uh, is always, uh, onto another project on, on the grounds. I'm, I'm there, uh, part of the Thursday morning garden crew, for which we always need, uh, need volunteers. We also have some folks that come on some Tuesdays and some Saturdays, but we have a solid group on, on Thursday mornings. And, uh, we do the things you have to do, either deadheading or mowing the grass or moving cordwood, whatever. And, uh, we have a good, uh, cadre of, of folks who enjoy coming, thank you for these minutes.
So I was in the Flower Building.
Yeah.
This is Friday, uh, always one of our favorite stops, and, uh, I saw your display, and you won an award. Uh, but I was struck by a big difference, you know, all these displays, there are always at least one do not touch sign.
Yes.
Whereas yours.
Thank you.
You were encouraging people to walk on the little walkway there, maybe touch, you know, one of the little. Uh, display trees or something, and, uh, I saw little kids up there doing exactly that.
Yeah.
I thought that was a very nice approach, so I'd compliment you on it.
Thank you for noticing it, uh, it is something we decided early on, that we were not going to request that people, uh. Refrain from touching, breathing, looking.
Walking even on the path.
Sure, sure, do not enter, do not what, no, we say please enter, enter at your own risk, but please enter. We encourage the children to interact with, uh, either the, the bushes, the flowers, or the, the thing that really attracts them. Is the, uh, the, the water, uh, uh, water features, and, uh, they'll put their finger in it, in it, then, of course, the waters. And, and the kids are, are either reluctant to do it, or the parents and grandparents are pulling them back, and I'm saying, no, let them do it. Let them do it, and sure, they, they, I don't know if it's sedum or seedum, uh, the moss that's laid down, that takes a beating from people stepping on it. But that means the kids are getting, getting finger in, sometimes up to their elbow, sure, but the interaction is what we're trying to encourage.
And that particular spot was, uh, used by the Top Seal Garden Club for years and years.
Yes.
And they won awards almost every year, and so.
It's not the spot.
Yeah, and they.
It's us.
And they, uh, I think you're a very worthy successor, good, going another level here on improvement.
Well, at the ri- at the risk of, um, uh, influencing the open voting that is going on right now. Free, free publicity, um, thank you very much.
Uh, a, a question, if I might, do you do your rounds at the fairgrounds every day?
Yes.
Uh, what time of the day do you start?
Oh, it's, it's, it's as I.
Random, whenever you get there.
Right, well, not only whenever I get, get there, but what has to be addressed right away? And, uh, if I can get certain problems that might have cropped up handled, then I'll, uh, I'll do my rounds, it's.
You said we could join you, you invited us, but what time would we show up to do that?
Contact me.
But you, but, but, but you're looking at the, at the food vendors primarily.
Everything, no, when I, when I walk the perimeter, uh, perimeter of the river, the tree line, the fence line.
Oh, okay.
I'm primarily looking at black water, gray water, et cetera.
You said that as a matter of fact.
But in, in the, in the core, we're, we're go- we're looking at food vendors, um, there's a, there's a system. Uh, uh, of course, my style is, it, it won't look very systematic, but there is a method to my little methods.
There might be a system in your head.
Yes, yes, yes. Was there something else on the T A report you were gonna bring up?
I'm concluded.
You're concluded, okay, then I'll point folks to correspondence, a few thank yous for the fire department. Some information about the L E D streetlight conversion, and, uh, to point out, the assistant superintendent of the T T U has. Said he's going to retire, so the T T U is looking for input. Uh, whether that's through survey or through committee membership.
The T T U.
Tritown Union, the elementary schools, they shared a superintendent with Boxford and Middleton. Um, they're looking for input as far as, oh, that one's weird. Um, so please go onto board docs, if, and that, that input and that survey should be in multiple places. Um, and then my last remark is I did look it up, and I cannot find anything that says I do have the unilateral authority to adjourn the meeting. Unless there's some hostilities going on, so I am still going to rely on things to occur the way they traditionally.
Motion to adjourn, so, so you need hostilities?
All those in motion, or all, all those in favor of adjournment, hi, any opposed? Any abstentions, we are dismissed.
Thank you, John.